With the budget and then the numerator, remaining fund net balance keeps getting smaller. So we're moving down to, we're moving down, you know what I'm saying? We're not, we're getting close to seven percent. By my calc, five point two million over seventy-two million is seven point two percent. We're trying to move the number up for our bond rating. So if every year, our budget goes, oh, that wouldn't make sense then, because our denominator's going up. I'm sorry, I was wrong there. But we still don't want to dip into the fund balance as a constituent part of revenue, I wouldn't think, on a regular basis, because we keep chipping away at it. Are we connecting?
Oh, I've been advocating that for years.
Okay. Yeah, no, I wasn't telling you that, I was just asking what your thoughts were. I mean, I'm happy to hear your thinking on all this.
But isn't it true, Anna, that this is the first year that we've ever actually used it? I mean, prior to this year, we've always returned money to the fund balance. This is the first year we're actually going to have to pull funds from that, correct?
Well, as you get, as you get tighter budgets, that's what happens.
Right, so this is the first year that it's happening, correct? Prior to this year, we've always returned money to the fund.
But not always a hundred percent.
No, no, hardly ever, a hun- never a hundred percent, not in the five years I've been on the board, but for six years, I keep losing track. But we've never dipped into it, even though we funded for it in the revenue side. Or maybe we haven't.
We used to return more money, and we're not, we're returning less money. If we return...
We're not returning any money. We're ta- we're taking money, we're taking money this year.
We're, we're only taking half of it, because we think three hundred thousand will be left over, instead of seven hundred thousand.
Which is typical.
We're not, right, we weren't, didn't you say we're gonna take about three fifty out of the six fifty, let's say? So, that would mean that we had three hundred thousand left over at the end of the year that we could give back. You, you calculated your budget last year to use exactly every dime in the, in these expenses, and you get every revenue, and use that six seventy-five. And if we're, if we're only gonna use three fifty out of that six seventy, six fifty, if we're only using, if we're taking three fifty, then we have three hundred thousand left over.
But have we always taken six hundred and seventy-five for the past five or six years? Have we always taken?
That's a pretty steady number. It's been in the sixes.
It was, it was lower.
It was lower.
Yeah.
So we took six seventy-five last year, but you're thinking, I'm gathering from what you're saying, is in previous years, it wasn't that much that we banked on.
No, it had gone up, and then we started reducing it, and then, two years ago, it was increased to six seventy-five.
So, do, Mark, do you do that when you build your budget? You come up with the number that you're gonna lean on? How, how do we arrive at the number for the, for the budget?
Is in terms of using fund balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, in the past, every year, when we built the budget, we tried to reduce what we were using by fifty thousand, with the idea to try and build fund balance up. And then, a couple of years ago, it was increased to six seventy-five. And I do believe, Ms. Alberti, it was your recommendation to increase it to six seventy-five that year.
I know last year I said zero. I don't know what I did the year before that. I, I don't know what I did the year before that.
And then since that time, we've maintained that level of six seventy-five.
So I'm just suggesting going forward, if we see that we don't want to be this fragile, if you will, for lack of a better word, that we don't put that much, that we don't create a budget with that much reliance on the fund balance.
Okay, so to do that, what we have to do is we have to decrease the budget by an amount that doesn't require the fund balance to be touched, or we need to increase revenues in some area, other area. We either need to decrease the budget, or increase a different revenue stream. So it feels like what we're coalescing around is trying to decrease the budget sufficiently so that we don't have to touch the fund balance. Is that kind of where we're trying to get to? Is that the consensus of the board?
Sounds like it. I guess, to try to work backwards, but yes, to your question. Camille, you had crunched some numbers, and in regards to like, what is the mill rate increase going to be? I kinda like to look at it like a scale. If we, if we take this much, it's gonna be this much of an increase. If we take this much, it's gonna be this much of an increase.
Well, I don't have my PC, so I can't really do a what-if analysis to any, like, accuracy, but I can kinda estimate what it'd be.
Yeah.
And I, and I could tell you what I think the mill rate would be if we pass the budget as presented.
Okay.
Is that what you wanna know?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to get an understanding of where it's gonna go. And I understand it's a six percent increase, but just as it sits.
So the mill rate this year, the, the mill rate that this board set last May was two six point one six. And if we pass the budget exactly as it was presented to us, from both the town and the Board of Ed's side,
Yes.
the mill rate, my calculation says twenty-seven point six two.
Okay.
So that's an increase of one point four six mils, or five point six percent to the tax.
But that's if we, what, Camille, I think that that's if we take six seventy-five out of the fund balance.
Mm-mm.
No?
No.
Okay.
If we take six seventy-five out of the fund balance...
If we use six seventy-five, let me put it that way.
Have you done a mill calculation for what it would be if we approved this as-is?
I had twenty-seven point four seven.
Now, did the average rate of collections change from last year? Last year, you gave me ninety-eight point four percent. Are you still using that same calculation? Are you using the new, the grand list of two billion, one hundred sixty-six million, four hundred fourteen thousand, or two hundred and sixty?
Yes.
Okay. So that, times ninety-eight point four, is two million, one thirty-one, two billion, one hundred thirty-one million, seven hundred fifty-one, six thirty-two?
Well, I, I also add to that an estimated supplemental motor vehicle tax amount.
That's not on the tax assessor's letter. So where does that money come from?
Well, that, so every, every January, we send out supplemental motor vehicle taxes. It's the cars.
No, I, I understand what it is, but I'm understanding why it's not in the budget.
It's part of the fifty-eight million. It is in the budget. It's not, you're just saying it's not in the grand list, information that the assessor provided to you. Because she's doing the grand list as of October first, these are supplemental motor vehicles. So I go and I look at what, what that amount has been in prior years, and make an estimate.
So that, that's what I was getting at. How, how do you know, you know, so you do include it into...
The calc, yes.
The calc, but not in the budget? You're not making a projection of that based on historical numbers, and putting it into the budget?
Well, I am, because that's how I, I come up with what to estimate for. I do it on a mil, a grand, like, I use a grand list value for that, an increase.
So what was, what was the mill rate you came up with, twenty-seven point four?
Point four seven.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-seven point four seven.
Because that includes more revenue from the...
Right, but then, I also have to net out some via HEPA's and Twin Haven, because they get, they have tax breaks that we have to take into that. And that, and, but at the end of the day, came up with the twenty-seven point four seven mill rate.
So if you're taking tax money out, then that would make the rate go up from mine.
But you have to remember, some of that is offset by the increase by the supplemental taxes.
So supplemental taxes add point one five mils every year, more or less? Okay, so there's your range, twenty-seven point four seven to twenty-seven point six two.
All right. Can, can we break it down, so, can we work backwards? Let's say we took a mill rate of twenty-seven, what would we have to come up with to, to...
A miracle. I, I don't think we can get under a mill increase. I don't see how we could do it.
How were the stakeouts?
Nine, two, oh, seven, five, seven.
We're absorbing the one point two from last year, we're absorbing another.
I just wanna see where, where it falls.
That's the, we don't know where that is.
So you wanna know what the budget would be, Jason, if we took the mill rate down to twenty-seven?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
So that would be...
Or we took that in half, basically, where we got sixteen...
I don't know what that number would mean for the budget, but it would be even lower than what I proposed. Because what I proposed tonight got us to twenty-seven point twenty-seven.
Okay, and you were, you were proposing a million in.
You were at...
I was at one million four fifty.
So that's how dramatic it is, all right.
Yep.
Okay.
But your cap didn't...
Budget.
Yep.
But Camille, your cap didn't include the supple- supplemental motor vehicle tax.
This is true, so it, take, take point one five off of my twenty-seven point twenty-seven. And we're looking at twenty-seven point twelve. If, if I take into consideration the supplemental motor tax bills, twenty-seven point one two.
And you were, that was like a million five you had.
Yeah, well, it's about one million four fifty. Because I, but again, that was taking the entire six hundred and seventy-five fund balance, and restoring it to the fund balance, and not using it in our budget.
Okay.
And pulling that all out of the expense side of the budget.
Did the budget increase this year, this proposal, one point two million dollars?
That's just Board of Ed, isn't it? Board of Ed's one point two million.
Both together.
Both.
Yeah. The total budget increase this year is one point four. So if we decreased by one point two million dollars, we would maintain our twenty-six point one six mill rate. So we have no increase, everything stays the same.
No, because we lost state funding. Because of the state.
State, your, your expense side is the only thing you can control.
Okay, okay, yep, 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 and the mill, the proposal, I mean, the, no? Grand list went up a little bit, but the state went down a lot. Okay. So I think, I...
So a zero percent budget across the board, still with the state, we'd be at like, I don't know, two...
Twenty-seven and a quarter or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd still be at, yeah.
I, I just wanna read something for the board, too, that I pulled off of, I don't know, it's... Office of Policy and Management. I guess they said that the budget allows the town to reduce its minimum budget requirement in fiscal years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. If it experiences a decrease in ECS funding, the MBR reduction cannot be higher than the ECS decrease. That's, that's something to think about, too.
One more, one more nugget.
So, it, it, it feels to me, like, based on everything we looked at at the budget, there's not enough room in this budget to remove what we think we want to remove. I mean, if I look at how much everybody around the table proposed, Anna proposed decreasing a total of six thousand dollars from the town budget. John proposed removing three thousand five hundred. Lisa proposed twenty thousand. Camille proposed decreasing, depending on how the math goes, one point four million dollars, unless you add back in the other part, which I wrote somewhere else. Jason proposed decreasing the town budget by ten million dollars.
Ten, ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars, I'm sorry, ten thousand dollars.
Jesus.
But that's before we had the fund balance discussion built.
That's right.
But the fund balance discussion is part of the revenue side, it's not part of the budget side.
I disagree.
And what you're saying, what you're proposing is, if what you're proposing is that we, in addition to everybody's numbers, we also find an additional six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, I'd like to see where that's coming from, because I just don't see that kind of margin in any of these line items. I just don't see it. So, I'm willing to hear a discussion about where we think we can remove an additional six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, or what proportion of that six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars we would remove from the town budget? Or would part of it come from the Board of Ed, and part of it come from the town?
Well, I think it needs to be a hybrid, for one thing.
Okay.
I don't think we can sustain that kinda cut.
So I'm listening, I'm lis- listening for suggestions for how we would offset that six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. If you feel it should be some of it Board of Ed, some of it town, and some of it has to stay, or some of it has to be mill rate, that's the conversation we have to have now. Because what we have to do is we have to get to a budget that we can all agree on.
Well, if we go to, if we do away with our withdrawal from the fund balance right now, the six, or, wait, let me retract that. We said we would use three twenty-five tentatively for fund balance, as opposed to six seventy-five, which means three fifty, as of that, as a revenue source, would have to be balanced by taking three fifty out of the town budget. So I suggest, just for a first cut, to, to deal with the fund balance problem, we do two hundred, cut two hundred from the Board of Ed, and a buck fifty from the town, just to deal with that number. That gets us back to zero. Well, not really zero, it gets us to three hundred thousand dollars of revenue for use in the fund balance.
So what are your two numbers?
Well, two hundred for the Board of Ed, and a hundred and fifty for the town. And then leave three hundred in the fund balance. And that essentially means we're accepting this budget as presented, right? Because I'm just...
You're just, you're just...
I'm just dealing with the fund balances here.
Shifting, shifting the...
I'm, I'm doing away with the heavily reliance, heavily reliance on the fund balance. Then if we want to cut the budget more, then we gotta talk, I mean, that's kind of a different, a next layer of cut for me.
Okay.
So I think we need to deal with the urgency of the fund balance. And that's my proposal, to get us out of that problem.
Okay, so if I understand what you're saying, is you're accepting the fact that we would have to use three hundred thousand of the fund balance. Hopefully, as contingency, hopefully, we'll only use a percentage of that.
Yep.
Hopefully, by this time next year, we'll have a conversation saying, we only needed none of that, because the state gave us three hundred thousand more than we thought, or whatever. Decrease the Board of Ed budget by two hundred thousand, decrease the town budget by a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
And based on the conversations that we already had, that's the areas that you would have, Mark, over there.
Right, but I'm not necessarily done with the budget, in my opinion. That's just how to deal with this fund balance problem.
Okay, so additionally, on top of that, what else would you propose?
So, I wanted to, um, so that gets us back to zero, and that means our mill rate would increase...
Go up to twenty-seven, no, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven point four.
Point four seven.
I think is what Anna said.
Five point oh two increase.
Say it again.
Five point zero two mill rate increase.
Five point zero two?
Percent.
Well, it's gotta be more.
Oh, percent.
Percent, percent.
You were scaring me.
One point three one, one point three one.
Okay, so we go from twenty-six point one six to twenty-seven point four, right? And that difference is...
Four seven.
Four seven, so that'd be a five point oh two percent increase.
Or one point three one mil, yes.
Or one point three one mil, which I still think is too much. But at least we've got a little more granularity here.
Okay.
I wonder if, were we to try to get to four and a half percent increase? Is there some number that you could tell us we would need to reduce expenditures by? Like, I don't know if you have it in a spreadsheet, and you can work it backwards. I'm not trying to ask you to be Houdini, I don't know what your tools are, but... In other words, we're, we're trying to, the other, this is good, then we're trying to say, what can the taxpayer bear? Right, so, basically, the budget we're presented is five percent. If we wanted to cut that percent to four point five percent, what would the new mill rate be? And, and what would the, what would we have to reduce expenditures by?
We stuff, so you can look at it outside.
So, I don't know, twenty-six point two five is one point three one. So, Bill, you're a wizard.
Yes, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, there's just too many, too many things that she's got in the back of her head, with all the different funds that she can pull on and stuff. So you would like to see a number that's equivalent to a four point five percent decrease?
So one divided by twenty-six point one six.
Okay, John, while she's doing her math, where's your head at with this budget decrease?
She said, out of the six seventy-five, we're gonna use how much, three twenty-five?
She's proposing that we start off with leaving three hundred thousand dollars, continue to use three hundred thousand of the fund balance, decrease the Board of Ed budget by two hundred thousand, decrease the town budget by a hundred and fifty thousand.
So, so that would be leaving three hundred and twenty-five thousand in the fund balance.
Okay, this is three twenty-five.
Yes, thank you.
See, I'm not doing the math, no, I'm just listening to what you're saying.
I'm sorry.
That's a dumb. And then we're trying to see what additional savings would have to be found to bring this mill rate increase down to four point five percent.
So i- if we increase the mill rate by one point oh five, Anna, I think that would get us to very close to a four percent increase. And if we increased it to one oh, one point oh five, I don't know if you can readily tell us what the additional expenditure cut would have to be? Is my question clear?
So you want the mill rate to go up by one point oh five?
Yeah, because that gets us very close to a, well, it gets us to a, a four point oh one percent increase, versus a five point oh two increase. Which is still a lot, but, I mean, I, you know...
That is.
It would be shared pain.
So you want the mill rate to be twenty-seven point twenty-one?
Um, yes, ma'am.
What, what was your end goal, Lisa?
My end goal was...
Four percent.
To cap a, uh, increase to the taxpayers at four percent?
Yeah.
Four point five percent.
Four point five?
No, four, four.
Four.
Oh, what, I'm sorry, did I, four point five, I, I, I'm sorry, I said four point five. My bad.
That's too much, four, or three, three percent, but it would be...
So that would be twenty-seven point three.
It would be, I'm sorry?
A one point four five mil increase would be twenty-seven point three three.
A one point four five mil increase.
No, a one point oh five mil increase, which she believes to be a four point five percent increase.
I think I, I think I spoke wrong.
Okay.
So if it was an increase of one point oh five...
What's the difference of money?
It's four, that would be a four percent increase.
Four percent.
I misspoke, and I led you astray.
So you're driving...
I was targeting for a four percent increase in the mill rate, which would make the new mill rate equal to twenty-seven point two one. That's a four percent increase. So at twenty-seven point two one, my question would be, how much would we have to cut off of expenditures? My goal was to make this shared pain, and instead of having the mill rate increase, the taxes increase five point oh two percent, I was looking for four percent. I'm kinda trying to work backwards here. But please check my math, because I make mistakes.
So to cap the increase at four percent to the taxpayers, the mill rate has to be twenty-seven point two one.
Right.
If we leave three hundred and twenty-five thousand in the fund balance...
Right.
How much do we have to pull out of the amount to be raised by taxes?
Because we'd be cutting from town, Board of Ed, and raising taxes. If anybody's got a better way to get there, I'm all ears.
Even, even without that, I'm looking at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar cut to the town, and we haven't found anything that comes even close to that.
Well, but it's a twenty-six million dollar budget. Mark's a bright man.
But he's already cut...
I know he has, but he's still a bright man.
To get to the zero percent cut, he's, he's already cut the cuts, the cuts, the cuts.
That's because we took it out of fund balance to start with, which is like leaning on the Christmas club to pay the oil bill.
Nope, 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 nope. As we've gone through all these bills, all these budgets, we've all looked at them, we've all said, we don't see anywhere else to cut beyond these things that we've talked about.
Right.
So now to say, well, we don't know where there's gonna be an hundred, an additional hundred thousand, if there, if we even take worst case scenario, if we think that there's thirty thou- a hundred and twenty thou- I don't, I don't know where it's gonna come from.
Well, that's because we're, we're looking at this with the eyes we have. Look, what Grattan had to do is say, an order of magnitude change is they're closing a school, which, I'm not suggesting we do that, but I'm saying, we gotta look at this with new eyes and say, okay, maybe we need to do away with a person here, or, I don't know what the answer is, that's not my job. But I just think we gotta look at this with new eyes, because we're gonna be doing the same darn thing again next year.
All right, so let me go through it this way, then.
Bless you.
Bless you. So, John, where your head's at with this budget here, do you believe that we can remove more than two hundred thousand dollars from the Board of Ed budget, and more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the town budget? Do you think we can remove more than those two values?
I think on the Board of Ed, you can. I'm not sure on the town side.
Okay, so...
That's what I'd ask Mark. I mean, he's cut his town to nothing, can he find another hundred thousand somewhere?
Well, we should ask Jeff the same thing, if we're doing that, I mean...
I, I'm sitting here thinking, how many, you know, do we, do you close the library two days a week? I mean, it's gonna cut into services.
Yeah.
And, 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 and I, and I say this, I say this every year, it's my fourth time. If you're gonna pick a number, pick it on January third for me, so I don't have to go through this book. And, and just give me a number, and we'll get to it. Because if we're gonna go line by line, and really dig down and get it down to bone, then, then you can't just pick a number out of the sky, a four percent, and no offense, but, but you can't do it, you can't build an expense budget that way. I know there's a revenue side, and I know there's the mill rate. In, in the end, in the end, I want it to be negative twenty percent, because, because I'm representing everybody, but, but, well, that's another thought I have, and I don't wanna go there. I could cut the CNRE, well, we'll strip the money out of the re, re...
Districting?
Re, no, reassessment, revale, thank you. We cut the money out of revale, we're trying to save money, so we don't get a half a million dollar hit in three years, but we strip it every year. So we're gonna end up...
And how much is that?
I think that's, I, I can go over that.
Is it in the capital plan?
It's in the capital plan, it's, it's the CNRE accounts that we do. So I'll take it out of the HVAC, I'll take it out of the roof, we do that every year. We take it out of sidewalk fund and the town road fund, and we'll close the library at least one day a week.
I mean, it's...
And I'll take fifty thousand away from them. And I can get to a hundred, I can get to a hundred, well, you said a hundred and fifty. But you're gonna go deeper than that, I don't know where you go, other than close the library two or three days a week.
Well, I, we had a hundred and fifty, then I backed off and I said a hundred.
No, I know, I know, but, well, a hundred and fifty was the initial calc.
Right.
And I was just letting you all figure it out, because, you know, we've been at it for a while, and we're gonna run out of...
So, John, do you see, from what you've reviewed of all the budgets, do you see a combined three hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction opportunity? Do you see, do you see that as an opportunity? Do you, do you see three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of excess anywhere in here?
Total?
Yes.
Yeah.
So your additional cut would be another five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, after the three fifty.
Okay, so let me, let me, let me try to get to the three fifty first. So you think there's more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that?
I'm looking at, instead of one fifty, two hundred, one hundred, three hundred.
I'm sorry, for the Board of Ed, instead of two hundred, you're seeing what?
Three hundred.
Three hundred. And then for the town, you're seeing...
A hundred.
One hundred, okay. So you see a total of four hundred thousand dollars of margin in this budget?
I think we can get there, if we can get to a hundred.
I'm sorry, three and one is four, yes, you see four hundred thousand dollars of margin.
Yeah.
So, Lisa, to restate what you said before, do you think that there's three hundred thousand dollars of margin, four hundred thousand dollars of margin between the Board of Ed and the town budget?
Well, before I answer that, did you, did you just, did somebody just say that we'd have to cut five hundred and sixty-six thousand to get to a, a mill rate of twenty-seven point two one, or did I dream that up? That's what you said, five sixty-six.
Five sixty-six, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, that's not doable.
On top of the other six seventy-five.
That's not doable.
Okay. So, going down to Jason, Jason.
So, so wait, you want me to answer your original question?
I'm sorry, yes.
Is, do I see that we can get to three fifty?
Do I see that you can... Do I see that you can go any deeper than four hundred thousand dollars?
No, I, I'm not, I'm not looking at four hundred, I think I said two hundred.
You said one fifty, two hundred.
You said two hundred and one hundred, but then you wanted to go down to the one point, or the four percent growth, so that's where the other-
We can't get to four percent.
Okay. So, do you see four hundred thousand?
Um, two hundred, one fifty, and fifty. I s- I see three fifty that we could cut.
Okay. So, you see two hundred and one fifty?
Yep.
Okay. Going down the other end, Jason. Looking at what we've seen today. Do you see, do you see within the budget that we've looked at today, four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, how much margin do you see? Cutting everything that you think we can cut.
I didn't originally see this, uh, much money, but, I, 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 I guess from the town, a hundred, and then, and I hate to say this, 'cause I have kids in school, and I, oh, this guy's gonna, but, you know, the Board of Ed, I went through it, it's, it's such a large budget, and there's, I don't know it well enough to say that we, we can cut the money out of it, it's just 'cause I'm not intimate with it, but, on a forty-seven million dollar budget, and I know it's only going up two point five percent, I mean, I, I, God, I would think they'd be able to find some more money there, but I don't have the dollar number, and if you give me five-
Do you feel it's two hundred, three hundred?
I would, I would guess three hundred, I mean, I don't, I would like to say more, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna stop at three hundred thousand.
Okay. Anne. Based on what we've seen in front of us now for opportunities, what do you see available to remove from these budgets?
I'm gonna stick with my original figures. I see two hundred for Board of Ed, and I see very little on the town side, that's where I'm at.
So, you see two hundred and six thousand?
That's right.
You said six thousand before.
I just don't, I mean, I think it, we could go through that additional exercise, and I'm sure we could squeeze and squeeze.
Okay.
But we're gonna get to a point of, I think, a point that we don't want to be at as a, as a town and as a community.
That's a good point.
So, I'm, I'm stopping, I'm, I'm drawing the line there.
Okay. Camille, do you see within this budget a total opportunity of what?
Well, I, I said before that I think that two hundred is too little of a reduction for the Board of Ed, and one hundred and fifty is way too much for the town. If I were to stick the town with a number in terms of, uh, reduction, I would probably go with about thirty-five thousand dollars reduction. And I would probably go with the Board of Ed at the minimum budget requirement this year.
The minimum budget requirement.
Which is what, zero increase?
Zero increase.
Well, actually, a little bit more than the minimum budget requirement, 'cause this paper says that we can go below that because of the cut in ECS, but if, I would say that, to me, with fifty-five less students, there's gotta be a way to reduce in other areas and come up with a flat, I mean, I mean, Mark did it, Mark came up with a zero percent increase to his budget, and that's a much smaller budget than the Board of Ed.
Right, but he used six seventy-five out of fund balance to do that.
So.
Jeff didn't do that.
No.
Okay, so.
Well, you, you, you built-
No, that's for everybody. That six seventy-five is for everybody's use.
My, my expense side is, yeah, goes to both sides.
So, the six seventy-five, I, I hear what you're saying, Lisa, but that, but that six seventy-five is not just for the towns, for everybody. It's for the town and the Board of Ed, 'cause it goes into the, the overall revenue picture. You know, what, you know what I would like to do, Mr. Chairman? I, I would like to make some motions about some slam dunk things that I think we can agree on, and maybe, um, get those out of the way, and then maybe go home, do a little bit more thinking about the new information that surfaced tonight, and continue deliberations on Wednesday.
So, for the Board of Ed, you don't, you, you're kind of in this one point two million dollar range?
I'm, I'm for a flat budget this year, whatever that was over last year.
Okay. So, it sounds to me like the range in the Board of Bud- Board of Ed cuts ranges from two hundred thousand to a flat budget of one point two oh six, one twenty-seven. And it sounds like the town budget ranges every, anywhere from flat to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease. Because I'm gonna say that I'm in the zero category for the town budget, and although I said a hundred thousand, I can understand the two hundred thousand, and I'd be willing to go up to two hundred thousand for the Board of Ed. I don't believe that there's a consistent, um, based on everybody's input today, I don't see a consistent slam dunk on any one category, but if you would like to make a proposal, I would be willing to listen to a, a proposal.
I would. I would like to make a motion to add one thousand dollars to the Department one fifteen Services to Community budget, and add the Brian Daigle Foundation as a line item in that budget.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation about adding a thousand dollars to Brian Daigle Foundation to Department one one five? Here and on, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We can call that a-
Low hanging fruit, Mark.
That's. We were able to add a thousand.
So, we're up a thousand dollars after three hours. I just wanna point that out for the record. No, don't worry.
Okay. All right, I wanna hack through this a little bit longer. I wanna talk about the town budget. Yeah, I like to use this last ten minutes, and if we can come to a consensus, that'd be great, and if we can't, then, then we'll move on.
Would you entertain a motion for the Board of Ed budget?
I will entertain a motion for essentially anything at this point.
I make a motion that the Board of Ed increases be cut by two hundred thousand dollars.
Their increases becau- that would be a one thousand, a one million, six thousand dollar increase. If you wanna decrease their increase by two hundred thousand, that means you're gonna accept a one million, six thousand dollar increase.
Correct. I said-
Okay. Okay.
Two hundred for the Board of Ed cut for their proposed-
Okay.
New budget.
Okay.
And one fifty for the town, so, I feel like there's more consensus on the Board of Ed at this point, not unanimous, but I feel there's more consensus. So, I am making a motion to cut the Board of Education proposed budget by two hundred thousand, which would get it down to one point oh oh six, one twenty-seven.
Growth over last year. Okay.
Growth over last year.
I have a motion from Lisa to decrease the proposed budget for the Board of Ed by two hundred thousand dollars. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion that we'd like to have around that two hundred thousand dollar value?
Uh, one, one question.
Go ahead.
So, if we're gonna go with a two hundred thousand, that means this, this town is gonna be one fifty.
No, it does not.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
We didn't get to it yet.
There's nothing that says, there's nothing that says these two numbers have to add up to any certain value.
That's right.
I think if you look, Anne proposed six thousand, um, you proposed a hundred, Lisa proposed one fifty, Camille proposed thirty-five, Jason proposed a hundred, I proposed zero.
This is for the town numbers?
For the town.
Right, which we're all in.
So, this, this, the Board of Ed budget does not necessarily impact the, the town budget?
Indirectly, it does.
That's one part of the equation, there's town, Board of Ed, and taxpayers, so I'm just trying to deal with one at a time.
Okay.
And fund balance.
And I think, right, and I think there's more consensus that I hear on the board for the Board of Ed number, so.
So, can you support two hundred thousand? Is there anything that you'd like to add, subtract, or multiply?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Any other conversation about the Board of Ed, two hundred thousand dollars? Here or none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions?
No, I'm, I, I'm for it, I need s-
Okay.
Yeah.
So, one, two, three, five, one, so moved.
Could've been a lot worse, Jeff.
Okay. For the town.
Get up quick.
Yeah.
For the town portion of the budget, I would like to know if there's a proposal to add, subtract, or leave as is the town portion of the budget.
You want a budget, you want a motion on the town budget?
I would like a motion on the town portion of the budget, if there is a motion that's available at this time.
I will make a motion to reduce the town budget by thirty-five thousand dollars.
I have a motion to decrease the town budget by thirty-five thousand dollars, is there a second? Well, I'm gonna second that, because if you take the mathematical average of everything in front of us, it's almost thirty-five thousand dollars.
Wow.
So.
Median.
Support for the chairman, thank you.
Mis- mismedian, it's not the median, it's actually the math- mathematical average, but that's okay.
When you're using your zero.
Does my vote not count?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I don't, I don't see a whole lot of margin in the, I, I understand. Anna thinks six thousand, I'm closer to her than anybody else, but Camille now is that median. She's both, she's the average and the median. She gets double credit. Okay. Any other conversation? I have a motion and a second.
So, I will, I'd like you to consider increasing that cut, Camille, because the only other variable we have in this equation that I see is, well, we, we, is fund balance or taxpayers, and I just, I think it's too onerous a burden, and thirty-five thousand dollars does, seems like a drop in the bucket on a twenty-six million dollar budget. I think we can stretch a little more, I'd like you to consider at least rounding that up to fifty.
I, I'm not sure if I can, I'm not sure if I can go there, Lisa, just because, like, I, I've said from the beginning that I just think that two hundred is not enough from the Board of Ed, so I did go on record as saying that I didn't support that little of a reduction, so that was the opportunity to think about the taxpayers. I, I don't think that you can shave that much more off the town budget, I, I don't. Especially if we're, if we're gonna pull away, if we're gonna pull away, um, I don't know. Well, we still haven't talked about how much we're gonna pull away from the fund, but maybe it's not gonna be as little as three twenty-five, you know? I mean, I, it's, it's hard to say unless you put all the pieces of the pie in front of you together, but I, I, I don't wanna go that high on the town, I, I think it's bare bones. Other than, you know, what, what I made my case on in terms of, you know, salary increases not being in line with, uh, you know, the taxpayer base and what they're getting, um, and maybe, you know, not seeing a return on investment for fifteen grand that we funded for the fire study, I'm a little disappointed in that, I, I feel like it, we should've at least paid for the study with, you know, implementation of recommendations. So, if I take twenty from salaries and fifteen from the fire, I mean, there's thirty-five, I, I don't know where else it can come from, there's no paper clips to cut. And these departments, you know, some of them, I don't know if we can cut more people out of these departments, some departments only have one or two people in them. They're, they're, you know.
There's always opportunity to combine as well, but I don't think right now we have the information in front of us to do that. I think that we could combine and decrease headcount that way in the future.
So, I, I mean, just because I can't support a fifty thousand dollar cut doesn't mean that the rest of the board won't, so, I mean, we make a motion, we see how it plays out.
Yep.
Any other conversation about the motion before us? John? Jason? Anne?
No.
I do not want anybody to support or deny this because of the time, if you're unwilling to make an emote, if you're unwilling to support it, just abstain, and, and that's cool, we can just re-table it next meeting. But with that said, all in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion fails.
Three, three.
Motion fails. Three, three. Anne, John, and Lisa opposed? Jason, Camille, and I supported. So, given the time, I would propose that, um, we table the rest of the deliberations until the next meeting. And we'll pick it up where we left off.
So, the next meeting is just a continuation of the, of the town budget?
No, we have a-
Does once this agenda includes deliberations? It does? Okay. So, we'll see what time allows.
Plus deliberations.
Yeah, but we're getting there, we're getting there. If, if this was easy, anybody could do it.
Well, if somebody wants to take a quick stab at another motion, maybe it'll get.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion.
We have two minutes.
I'll make a motion to cut the town budget by forty thousand dollars.
There you go. There you go, you just have to vote that way. I'll second that one.
Well, I mean, I hear what you're saying, there, I mean, you can make a ca- an argument for any position, right? I'm just trying to get this to consensus.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any conversa- I seconded it. I seconded it.
Mr. Congeniality.
I've been going a lot of things, but that's not one of them. I have a motion and a, and a second. Do we have any other conversation about a forty thousand, twelve hundred and twelve-
Oh, your motion was thirty-five?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was thirty. Oh, so I'd like to, I'd, I'd like to amend my motion to fifty, I'm sorry. What do you mean, no? I wanna amend the motion to fifty. I really wanted one fifty, but I'll concede at fifty, 'cause I'm listening to what everybody else says.
You got me at forty, I'm not going to fifty.
All right, so my motion is fifty.
I have a motion for a decrease in the town budget, fifty thousand dollars, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any conversation about the motion in front of us? Do we think that fifty thousand dollars is that merry medium ground that we're looking for? Do we think that it should be, do we think that if we talk about it more, we're gonna come up with a better number that makes more sense? Can we get behind fifty thousand? Is fifty thousand as close to thirty thousand? Camille, any input?
I can't get, I, I'm sorry, I, I just can't get behind the, the fifty thousand. I mean, I, I really think that the budget as presented by Board of Selectmen on the town side is, it's, it's extremely tight, and I could not, and you, you suggested zero change, I suggested a few thousand change, and honestly, I, I've gone over it several times, and I, you know, I'm looking, but I couldn't really see it, and I think it's just unrealistic. I think it's really unrealistic, so, I won't second, and I'm not gonna vote in favor of something like that.
Any more deliberation, any more conversation? We have a, no, we have a motion and a second. We don't have any ayes, we don't have any nays, we're just trying to figure out what is the number that we're gonna settle on. It's not gonna be zero, it might be, maybe we'll get back down to zero, I don't think we will. It's gonna be some other number.
Maybe, I think I will make a motion, because I-
No, there's already a motion?
That's right, we have another motion, we have one already, sorry.
Okay. I just wanna know if there's any more deliberation about the fifty thousand dollar cut to the town budget that's before us. Do what?
I don't know that I should talk.
No, you shouldn't.
No. No, we're not there now. All right. I got a motion and a second, thirty, fifty, did you, did you, was you already in support of this conversation, or was it?
No, 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 I'm ready to vote.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
One, two.
Aye.
Who said aye?
I said aye, 'cause I don't think we're gonna get any lower, I think we should be lower, but I don't think we can.
Okay, so the motion fails.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Abstained?
Where are you, Jason?
Who's Jason?
He didn't say anything. You got three choices, Buckwheat.
I, 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 well, we can't really talk about it, it's a aye or a nay.
It's up to you, it's all writing on you.
A yea, a nay, or an abstain.
No pressure.
Yea, nay, or abstain, your choice.
Yay.
Yay. It passes. So moved. Four, two, zero. I would like to entertain one other emotion. That'd be an emotion of yours?
Yes.
But we have other, we have other items.
Oh, we do, don't we?
Public discussion, board comments, and a-
Yes, yes, yes.
Public discussion, this is a time in the agenda where anybody that would like to come up and talk about anything that is on the agenda or not on the agenda, to come up to the podium and speak what they'd like to speak. Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is board comments. This is the time that we talk about anything that's on the agenda or anything that we would like to be on agenda. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to not close out budget deliberations tonight, because I would like to make one more motion when we come back together on Wednesday, dealing with that issue of pulling the Beach Pass income out into a special revenue account. I would like to see that moved back into the general, uh, revenue fund, and then having off-book calculations done for the profitability or non-profitability of that.